Okay, good evening, everyone. Called a meeting to order, Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals for January 12th, 2022. There is no legal notice as all the hearings on our agenda this evening were continued hearings. So no legal notice. This evening, we'll start with a roll call of members. Jimmy Payne.
Yeah.
Chip Darbell.
Yeah.
Amy Wall.
Yeah.
Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Mike Feely.
Here.
Tom Loosby.
Here.
Greg McIntosh. Bill Conroy. We know she's here. And she's part of the team. Okay. So with our continued hearing, we actually, as usual, have some memos to take, uh, take up first in case anyone here for specific projects. This will certainly shorten the meeting quite a bit, uh, starting with, um, a memo typically from Brian McGrail regarding Crescent Commons Development LLC at forty-four, forty-six, and forty-eight Crescent Street. Comprehensive permit case number twenty-one dash thirty-seven requesting that we, um, both continue the me- uh, meeting and we have an extension. So, I think as we've handled this in the past, we should take up the extension first to formally extend the public hearing if the members so choose. And then we could continue the matter itself. Um, they've requested until our next hearing on January twenty-sixth. And, uh, the rationale being again, the subcommittee still meeting. Um, I think there's a meeting scheduled for what date is it?
Eighteenth. Tuesday.
Tuesday. So hopefully there'll be at least one, if not another subcommittee meeting progress made. We'll see where we are for the twenty-sixth. But, uh, with that in mind, um, so they've asked for a continuance, um, of the open hearing. Um, I think the last time we continued to January thirty-first, they're now requesting that we extend it to February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two.
So I move that we extend the public hearing to February twenty-two, was it Dave?
Twenty-eight.
February twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Have a second. Thank you, Amy. Any discussion on, uh, the motion to extend the public hearing? Regular voting membership?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that ends the public hearing to the end of February. Now they've requested that we continue, uh, the meeting itself to the January twenty-sixth. Meeting to allow for the subcommittee to complete the drafting of the decision to present it to the entire board for its consideration.
I move that we continue this to January twenty-sixth.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? All favor Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's unanimous. So if anyone's here for Crescent Commons, we will next hear that, uh, on January twenty-sixth. Next, also from attorney Brian McGrail dated today, July twelfth, uh, regarding CCF Quanapower Parkway Company LLC at two hundred to four hundred Quanapower Parkway. Case numbers twenty-one, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two requesting that we continue the matter to our meeting on January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two. To allow time for the completion of materials requested by the Board of Appeals. As members recall, we had asked for elevations and several things. Um, so they need more time to do that.
I move that we continue this till our meeting on January twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Amy. Any discussion on the motion? Regular voting membership?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So if anyone's here for Quanapower, uh, we expect to hear that at our next hearing on January twenty-sixth. Okay, which leaves us with our other continued hearing for the evening, which thankfully we will, uh, take up. This is two, case twenty-one dash forty-three and forty-four S G D Management Group LLC at ninety-seven to ninety-nine Water Street.
Great. Uh, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, welcome back.
You appreciate it. Attorney Brian McGrail on behalf of S G D Management Group LLC, um, we've been working, uh, diligently for a long period of time to come up with some revised plans, uh, which we'll get into momentarily. First, um, I have Severio Fletchini, who is the principal of the LLC who was here tonight. Robert Passione, who is our, um, architect. And I believe, uh, we got is Steve Lee is here, Stephen Lee, uh, from Allen and Major. Is that everybody Severio? Is that who I, is that our whole team that's here tonight?
I believe so, yep.
Okay, great. So, so those are, they're in attendance. They will be participating. And I'm sure, uh, Mr. McMahon will have a lot to add, uh, to kind of, I guess, set the table on this, refresh the board's memory. Uh, this has been before the board, uh, for, uh, some time. It's been continued because we were pretty close to, uh, closing this out. And we were notified by the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department that because of the proximity of the overhead wires on Water Street, um, the way we had it designed in the front of the building would not work, would be too close. Um, they have a minimum, uh, setback, uh, from, uh, some, from their wires of a minimum. And this is a bare minimum of ten feet, uh, but they usually want more, uh, for safety reasons, uh, for construction and maintenance on the building. And, um, we had to do, actually had to do survey work to show the wires. Um, Mr. McBain was appointed on behalf of the board, uh, to work with us through this process. So, as I mentioned, I'm sure Jim will have a lot to add on this. Um, it, it was Jim's request to actually survey the wires. So we could get a, an idea of where the wires were and then place the building. So there was a lot of survey and engineering work that had to go into this. Um, we're grateful to the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department because they participated in our meetings. Um, and, you know, basically tried to do everything they possibly could to help the situation. They were helpful. Um, and, um, in, in the redesign of the building to make sure that what we've got now will, will meet their requirements. Um, I think, um, in many respects, what's designed now from a streetscape perspective is, is, uh, nicer. It looks nicer, in my opinion, from Water Street, but that will be, uh, for you to decide. Um, we have, uh, we do have the storefront that we've kept. Uh, and we've kind of enhanced that, uh, to a certain degree. So we're going to show you the, uh, architectural aspects of that, too. So I think maybe, maybe the best place, uh, to start, and then we'll show the site plan is, is probably the architectural plans. Um, what, what, what we ended up having to do, because we pushed the building back on the upper two floors to deal with the wire. Why is we're able to keep the, the lower level of the building, uh, intact? So we, we had to push those two levels back a little bit, and you'll see that as we go forward. So reload that up if you could hold on.
Looks like you muted yourself.
Yeah, I did, because I'm yelling at my dog. So, okay. Hang on a second. Sorry about that.
I feel like I should get under the table and lay down.
Yeah.
Literally for that, I think.
Okay, so this is, this is the building from the, uh, Water Street side, from the intersection of Wakefield Ave. And as you can see, what we've done is the wires up here. So the problem was, is you're seeing, you know, you can see how it's now stepped back up above to get away from those wires. So it's, you know, I think it kind of gives the building some, some dimension and, and, you know, Mr. McBain had a lot of insight and input on this. And again, I'm sure you'll hear from, from him. We also made some revisions to the, to the storefront, uh, as, um, was requested by the board. What we've done to, what we had to do to make up for this space, to continue to make the, uh, uh, the units work, uh, we've actually cantilevered the back part of the building, uh, where you will drive through and be able to park. Uh, but we didn't push the whole first floor level all the way back because I think what, in working with, with Jim, the goal was to, to really just get back what we lost, not to, not to get more. And, you know, and that's why we didn't cantilever it. We didn't fill in the back. Um, just to make, to make up for what we lost in the front, uh, to deal with the, um, wire setback. This gives you a little perspective on the coming down Wakefield Ave that side.
Don't let the gentleman sun tanning in the picture there throw you off, guys.
Right. But before it was, I think when we last saw this back in April, this, that was an enclosed garage?
Correct.
It was open?
Okay. Right, Severio, that was enclosed for a period of time when, when, when the project was much bigger going all the way back.
When it was much bigger, yeah, it went all the way back to the.
That was the original base.
That was the original.
Yeah.
Okay, but the last one we saw had it open already. When we pulled it back from the property line and so forth.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And this shows you that, you know, kind of the dimension of the building, uh, in the front and this side. And this gives you an idea of, of how this is going to work. So basically we've got our retail in the front on the first floor. Um, you're going to drive in the cantilever area. There's going to be parking spaces inside or parking spaces. There's going to be, uh, two here. Um, what we, in, in order, in order to, um, make, make this work, we have to have an elevator in the building for handicap accessibility because, because of providing the retail on the first floor, we cannot have any residential on the first floor. There's no room for that. Uh, so we have to have an elevator to access for handicap, uh, accessibility. Because one of the, at least one of the units has to be handicap. So, so basically, um, what we're, what we've got is we've got it, the elevator, and you'll see this kind of, the elevator, uh, shaft kind of protrudes out from the building. And you'll see that as I, as I go through here.
But it was more towards the middle of the building. Now it's toward.
It is in the middle of the building. Yeah. And it protrudes further out. I'm sorry, David.
No, the previous design, I think it was more literally in the middle of the building. I thought.
Yep. It, it was, um, where you see the stairwell currently, you can kind of see, um, the mechanical closet right behind that retail space. It was actually sitting right there. And what Brian will show you in the next, uh, page is what ended up happening when we had to comply with Wakefield Lights' request to push back and then create some additional space for circulation for work post-construction.
So what happens is, is it's a bar, maybe you can explain this. Um, what happens is this elevator, uh, area actually steps back as you go up. So, uh, you'll see it here. So that's our second floor plan. And this shows you, this really helps because it gives you an idea of what we had to meet for the overhead wires. This is how the survey work was done. So as you can see, that's ten feet. And, and that's their minimum. They like to, they like to try to get to thirteen or so. So this is, that.
Yeah, the, the ten was then helping, uh, trying to be as helpful as possible and reasonable as possible, but it was an absolute minimum. What you see at the fourteen was basically the suggestion that, you know, post-construction on this thing is actually built. We still need another three to four feet in case someone wants to go up there and, you know, like, let's say, do any work, repair siding, et cetera, et cetera. So they wanted that additional clearance to allow for additional work to be done in the future after the building is built as well.
Okay.
All right. And that is a third floor plan, which steps back more and gives some dimension to the building. So you can see here, you know, the, the second and third levels, the, the elevator steps back from the back propping line by, what is it, ten feet approximately? Ten or eleven feet?
I think it's ten-eight.
Ten-eight. Yeah, I gotta blow that up.
That's correct.
Rob, are you there? Is that about right?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's ten foot eight. That's correct.
And then Rob also put together a roof plan for the, uh, equipment. And this shows you what we, what, what we dealt with on the setbacks. So I think we were pretty creative on how we designed this. And this is, so this is, this is from the, um, this is from the Wakefield Ave side. Uh, so you can see the storefront on the corner. Building steps back. This is open. This is not a garage door because the building is cantilevered. That's the first floor of the elevator. And then this is how, above the first floor, how it steps back and goes up along with the building. And this is a backside view of the building.
So what's in that first floor section of the elevator? I mean, the elevator doesn't change directions. Is it equipment cabinet or something?
Yeah.
That's the, um, that's the vestibule. So you're walking.
Really an entry.
Oh, the entry. Yeah.
Yeah, elevator machine room as well.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. And then this is, um, this is from the, um, other side. So if you, if, if you're coming, um, from Water Street going to downtown, that's kind of what you're going to see.
And that side's open, but you're not driving out there because it, there isn't a space, but it's just.
That's right.
Airflow, turn around.
It's open all the way. Correct. Yeah. And then this is your, this is your front on, uh, on Water Street.
Brian, you can't walk on that second. Sorry.
Sorry.
One at a time.
Go ahead.
No, I was going to say what you guys might be remembering or thinking of. It was open prior as well, except the parking spaces, if you remember, were, uh, tandem along the backside of the lot. So it just, it had a little bit of a different look and feel to it.
Yeah.
I think so. That's, and I did find the older plan and I was trying to compare and look at the differences, but, but I appreciate the clarification. Yep. Joe, did you have another comment?
Yeah, that, that second floor roof there, that's, the, the windows, can they get out on that roof or walk it if they had to? Or, because there's no railings this month there, so.
For the purpose of maintenance, doing work, that kind of stuff, you mean?
Well, I don't know. Like somebody on the third floor could jump out the window and stop walking on that second floor roof.
Up here, Joe?
Yeah.
I mean hypothetically, we're not, we're not finishing that space. So you're on balcony, balconies or railings or anything like that. No.
I know, but safety reason, would you want to put some kind of guardrail if someone jumped out of their window and?
I don't know if I want to encourage it.
I know, but.
You know, you put a rail up there, the people are going to think they should go out there.
True.
But so I mean, I'm just kind of running through.
Sliding doors.
Not just windows.
So I'm going to go back to the, I'm going to go back to the color renditions here. Jim McBane, I mean, you, you know, you, do you want to add anything if I kind of, because you, you were so intensely involved, so.
Well, there's no, there's, on that level, there is no, that, um, that third floor, basically. The windows are windows. There are no sliding doorways or anything like that. So the only reason for someone to be on the roof would be to do maintenance, basically, out there. And the additional four feet gives them more clearance from the wires at the pinch points, which is why it's been moved four feet, not just ten feet. Um, the, um, power department basically was not going to basically agree to anything without additional coverage. So ten feet was their normal rule. But then they brought up, of course, the issue with construction and maintenance, basically. So they wanted really an additional four feet, um, to make this work. So all of that, basically, from the ten-foot setback to the fourth foot, additional four set foot back, pushed this whole building towards in, back into the lot deeper than it was in the, in the last time that everybody saw this. So this scheme basically helps, um, solve the electrical problem, basically. At the same time, because of all the shifting, the elevator can't be in the center of the building as it was before, but has to sit in that back lot. But it also sets back off the property line some ten foot eight. So it's not right up against the, the abutter, except for, um, the room that people go in to get into the elevator, which is about four something off the property line. And so the, any balconies or anything like that, that the abutter has along that edge, basically, are up, up a floor above, um, that mechanical entrance level, basically, that's on the ground floor of this building. So it seems to work out all the way around. The, uh, the elevation, basically, on the side is because of the odd shape of this. Let's go to the rent, yeah, right there, right there. So you see the, the, the architectural elevation down that alley basically has the abutter along there. That's where the opening is also down that side, but there's no access down there. That's somebody else's driveway. And when you look at the architectural elevation, you're seeing both the side and Water Street at the same time, which becomes a little confusing. So looking at this, you get a better idea as to how Water Street looks and how that alley space, basically, one mills in the other, going around the corner. But you also get a sense as to how much setback has been put into this thing to basically get away from the wires at the same time. So I think it's, it's solved a lot of problems that have come up after we, after they thought they had no issues, basically. And, and they had settled and had taken care of some of the issues we had way back when. But then the power company came around. Um, and here's where we're at this point, to satisfy the power company. And it still gives plenty of space between the back of this building and the Wakefield, um, street building as well at, uh, the way this is planned out.
What, Jim, what's that dimension between, if you're on the balcony on the back of this new building, how far are you away from the balcony? Aren't there balconies on the Wakefield Ave building as well?
Yes, there are. And they're right up to the property line. So if you, if you look at the one that's up right now, uh, between the back of the elevator to the property line, which is that dashed line, it's ten foot, it's ten foot eight. And your balcony, the balconies on the back of that bedroom, basically, are only, I guess, three or so. Three something. They're more like French balconies than they are true balconies. They're two foot ten. So there's even more space basically there.
Okay.
The first, the first floor is closer to the property line with that, with the vestibule is. And then, and then as you go up, it steps back.
I'd say the balconies there from the property line are probably like, um, fourteen feet away.
Actually sixteen foot two.
Okay.
We're from here to here, Rob.
Uh, can you do that again, Brian? Sorry. Yeah, yeah, that, that dimension is sixteen foot two.
Right, the nineteen minus two ten. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
I mean, the setbacks in the business district is zero.
Yep.
I, I, I raised it because the, the rear rebuttal was concerned last time. And I don't know if they're here or not, or if we're going to hear about that.
How much closer is that than the previous design? I know, I think the first design was really close. Second design, we kind of moved away. And then how, how much closer is that now than, than last time? If at all, maybe I'm, I'm misunderstanding.
It's closer, Greg. Um, do you know?
Fourteen feet.
It's fourteen feet closer?
Yeah.
On the, on the, on the upper, upper levels, not on the first floor.
So Jim, if you go to, um, the previous.
Greg, where that comes from is, is, is having to step it back.
Yeah, so it, it moved the whole, essentially the whole floor moved. It wasn't like you shrunk the front, I don't know, seven feet.
And when Jim, yeah, when Jim looked at this, he, he, his comment was, we've got to help you and give you credit with the, with the setback for the wires, but you're not going to get that on the first floor to get more area. That's why we.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because you don't, because the setback from the wires in the first floor wasn't a problem.
I mean, the wires, the wires have pushed this back quite a bit. So it, it may not quite be fourteen, but it's close to fourteen.
Yeah. So do we know, though, how much, what the difference is from the first design? Was the, I'm just trying to remember, was the first design? Because this is very different overall anyways. I know that.
I'm talking to Greg, the original filing?
Yeah, yeah, excuse me, the original filing. Yeah, they, they, because only because that's where I think most of the, um, angst came from, was.
The original filing was all the way to the backside. So that elevator core and stairwell was right at the, okay, at the, at the corner, um, of the abutters lot. So like we, there was no room, there was no setback at all, basically.
Original filing had a one-foot setback on the back.
Okay, okay. Great. That, yep. Okay, thank you.
Oh, it's still better than the original design. Closer than, uh, the one we saw in April.
Yep.
Because of the, of the, uh, upper units. And it makes sense.
Yep.
You had to move them back to get away from the wires by fourteen feet. You, you, you know.
And then didn't use this as an excuse to go back to the original either. So, yeah.
You know, the other thing I noticed, um, it looked like the retail on that first floor, I think, back in April was nine hundred and something square feet. Now it's seven hundred and something. So we lost a little bit there.
Yes, you did.
Um, but we still think it's viable, a viable space for a tenant.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it's a great space. I mean, you know, that, that's going to fit some small business person, service establishment really well. I told you, you know, the, hey, you know, in the Latin building on Main Street, you know, there's a barber in there who's, who's flourishing. He has a great business, right? And, uh, it's just a great spot. I, I go there. It's a great spot for barber. Just, it's really kind of neat. I know that, I know the tenants and I know the owners in the building love it. They love it there.
Brian McGrail Law Offices.
Anyone in mind yet?
Uh, Severo, any, any type of use you think of here or?
Uh, it's, it's probably a little early, given, given the, the uphill struggle we've had here. Every time we think we're getting close, I don't want to, uh, I don't want to start making any promises on delivery dates to anybody, you know?
Right. No, just curious if you had any feelers or potential, assuming this all proceeds. Okay. Any other comments, questions, board members? I mean, this all makes sense. I know it's been a lot of time, but, uh, anything else, Jim, before we sort of turn it over to others or?
No, I, I think, you know, the, the package, as you will see, if, if Brian would scoot through the whole, the architectural package, basically. You can bring that back up again.
Oh, yeah, I can. Yeah, hold on.
So in order to, you know, um, try to close at least certain aspects of this, besides the, besides having the, the images basically here that show it in its current design, the latter part of it basically addresses, um, some of the details I normally ask for, as well as some of the products to be used on this, on this building. So you've got basically a handbook of other information beyond what you see on this page in the submission that you've been given so far.
Yeah.
Go to the end, Brian. Yeah.
Is this another gray and white building?
Uh, sort of.
No, no, Jim, it's called obvious gray.
That was a nice muted.
I'm just, let's, let's hope that sooner or later we had a chance to go green and we all went gray.
It's got mountain ash on the bottom.
Yeah, okay. I'm just, God, we have so much gray and white in this town. It's getting silly.
Wait till the pink one arrives.
I'll be okay with that.
Anyways, they have some of the details and, and the materials and the like in this package. So the, the next step for, I think, them is really, um, going through and setting up the conditions and stuff like that um, on this project. But I, I don't see this going any further. I'm fine. I'm perfectly fine with what's been presented. And the effort put into it to get this thing to solve problems, basically.
Excuse me, um, Mike Feely, how does, um, second egress work in the, um, retail? I mean, you got to get around the car.
Hold on, Mike. Let me go to the floor plan.
Um, I don't believe we need second egress, uh, because it's on the ground floor. What are you talking about?
Uh, there isn't a second egress.
There is no second egress.
Out of the retail space? No, there is not.
And for the building because it's sprinkled and the like.
All right, okay.
Yeah, it's ground floor, too, I think helps as well.
But I'd like to just kind of go through the, uh, just to refresh the board's memory, if I can, just on the site civil plans. Just a couple of, uh, highlights. Let me see if.
Well, has that been updated? I don't, we didn't.
It has. I submitted those. Yeah, we submitted a link to those on Friday. It was in your email.
Okay.
They were updated. We're providing the required number. We have an excess parking space. Um, we're providing seven, six are required. And I just want to, really want to remind the board that there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of, um, in, in. in, we're still waiting for the town engineers. We submitted a revised drainage plan, which you have not received the memo from the, from the DPW yet. That needs to be you, you need that, and they haven't had time to review it, and it's not their fault because they just got it when you got this. So that's kind of an outstanding item. But we, we continue, if you remember, there's a cross-country drainage pipe that comes through and goes right under the building, the current corner of the building existing. And that kind of causes a hangup for drainage flow in this area. It's a, it's a antique, it's a, it's like a brick type drainage canal that that can, that actually connected where the old factories were. And that was all of that drainage on this side of, on this side of Water Street was upgraded when Shaw's was built, and it's all state of the art. So what the town engineer is asking us to do is to to, to get rid of that, and we're going to at our expense, my client's expenses, he's going to reroute it around the building and connect it improperly, which is going to help with drainage in the area and prevent as the town engineer said, this is kind of an accident catastrophe waiting to happen for this area of town, because if and when this collapses, it's going to clog and it's, and it's going to be under a building, which is going to be a big problem. And if that happened in a major event, it would be a real problem. The other thing that is being done is all new sidewalks are being put right now. The current building encroaches on, on the sidewalk. So when we rebuild this, we're going to pull it back properly. And Severo, you're going to do all new sidewalks connecting, starting here on Wakefield Ave and bringing all new sidewalks right around here. Is that right, Severo?
Yeah, yeah, actually, along Wakefield Ave, some of that sidewalk is actually our land. So we're just going to adjust everything out and fix everything up, basically. So we're going to make a bunch of upgrades.
Yeah, so and and those will need, would need to be conditions if you approve this and would have to show in the plan. So so in the process of working, yes.
You should point out in that plan you got up that this building, either one, has been pulled back from the Water Street of Butter. Originally, that side of the building was practically on the property line. Now it's set back, basically, you can see what looks like a gravel strip or a planted strip, basically, along that side to give a little bit of breadth from the, from the property line between the two buildings.
Yep, that's right. So that's now setback five feet in this area in the back. It was not before. So I just wanted to reference those, you know, to remind the board that there's a commitment for those infrastructure improvements, which I think the engineering department's pretty excited about, because this sidewalk's been a problem with the encroachment in this drainage is an accident waiting to happen. It's going to, I'll get upgraded. And what's on the property line in the back and? Oh, you need me to go back, Dave? Yeah. Just to clarify, on the site, I don't know if the architect was really showed it, but maybe it's more pertinent to the site plan, if we're going to note fencing, retaining wall, whatever's on the ground. I see it's mentioned of piece stone. So I just want to make sure folks are comfortable with what's being proposed here, if there's any question. So can you describe what's going on? We, we understand the curve.
If there's a better plan, might do this. Hold on. Yeah.
Okay. Steve, do you want to address this, or you want me to do my best? Because what, what we're, what we're, what we're proposing is, there's an existing fence at the property line. It's going to remain. If it's damaged, it's going to be replaced with a similar six-foot-high vinyl white fence. And we provided a detail on that. This is this is, we're describing this landscape area, Steve or Severo, do you have any, any thoughts on what you want to do here? Because usually the board will want to, want a planning schedule. They're going to want to see what you're going to plant, if you're going to have plantings.
Yeah, I'll defer to Steve on that one, but I'm, I'm guessing Steve and Carlton are going to have a planting schedule for us included, so that's not a problem.
Steve, you there?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, if anyone can hear me. A planting schedule there, I mean, as long as, you know, I'm a civil engineer. Steve Lee, Alan Major, I'm a civil engineer, so I am not a landscape architect, but if that area gets enough sun and it can support plants, then, then it's absolutely there. It's called landscaped area because essentially in the zoning it was a requirement as far as like open area landscaped area. We just wanted you to know that 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 stone hatching is what we're classifying as open area on site. So if that area can get a lot of sun, then yes, absolutely, we'll put, we'll put plantings in there.
I think we need to figure that out. So, you know, the board's going to want to know that. So we, you know, before the.
They want to, Brian, Chip Tarble, you may want to just get a landscape architect to do a little work, and it's got to be sprinkled and all that fun stuff we normally do.
Yep, 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 yep.
There is some opportunity for some trees and stuff there.
Yeah, we can probably, we can probably put some landscaping in here in the back of the, in the back.
There's three spots you can.
Yeah.
I mean, they can't go too crazy, though, right? That'd be the only, those three parking spaces have to be shoveled out and snow put somewheres.
Correct.
So that's not like taking it.
True.
There can be low grasses and different things.
Yep. And I didn't see trash either, how that's going to be handled. The last thing, I know we're talking about site right now, but just, well, unmuted.
Um, yeah, so there's only, there's only four residential units in there, of course, so the idea was to handle it inside the building. We'll do barrels.
So where? Inside the building?
There's, there's room inside the enclosed garages.
Let me go back there.
In those two spaces labeled storage?
Hold on, I'm going to go back so we can look at that. If I can figure this out.
There appears to be room on either side of the stairway.
Yeah, labeled storage.
Yeah, well, you get this, and then you get some room in here, too.
So it should be marked somewhere on there what they're going to do and how they're going to handle it. You'd want that, Brian, for your O and M anyway.
Yep. Trash, recycling barrels, whatever, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can address that.
All right. Good catch. Anything else, folksy? Got landscaping, we've got trash location.
Signage.
We, I think we, I think what we're going to do, you know, my suggestion on, on this would be to you know, no signage is approved, but you will reserve it because, you know, we're showing kind of sign bands, but we don't, we don't even know who's going to be there yet. So but we're, we're contemplating where signage might go.
For the residence and the retail?
Well, if you're going to need signage for the residence, I mean, maybe, you know, we probably would just have ninety-seven, ninety-nine on the door. What do you think?
Yeah, yeah, we envisioned just numbering.
It's a small building. Whoever's the retailer is, if people are having, you know, guests, they can say, I'm in the same building as, you know, X. Enter and enter in the back. Uh, yeah, it's got to have the address on it, and whether it's on the door or not.
Yeah.
Okay. And the lighting was in the updated architectures, right? I'm sorry, Dave. The materials included lighting? I think somebody said lighting and signage. Do we have just?
Yes.
Doors, yeah.
Yeah.
Wall, wall path. I think they're going to be inside.
On there, I think. Oh, no, that was sprinkler. Never mind.
Yeah.
So small, I'm trying to read them.
Light department's been putting them inside. The gas meters would have to be outside.
Electric one, you just go?
Yeah, they've been putting them inside. I'll confirm, I'll confirm it, Joe.
Okay.
They can't put the gas meters inside.
No, but this doesn't have gas, right? I mean, so.
Okay.
The retail's not going to be any food, right? Just business, like.
It could be, you know, there's no limit on it.
Oh.
Maybe, maybe somebody wants to put a little sandwich shop in or coffee or breakfast.
Tooties.
Tooties three.
Right.
They've already tried it somewhere.
I know.
Okay. Yeah, all right, I'm scrolling through, making everybody dizzy. I'm going to go back. No, no, we've, we've raised a few points here, some good follow-ups before we enclose this. Was there any thought given to any? I don't know. I'm looking down the street. I see the building next door has shutters. I don't know if the design of this building really welcomes that, but the brick one doesn't really have it. Does, was there any thought, Jim or team?
No, I don't think that this is not a design that would really provide for shutters.
Okay. Yeah, just the way the windows design, maybe not. I'm just looking at those ones on the side that maybe could have them, but again, it's just not a good match. Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, the heat pumps, are they on the roof? Did we see that? Mechanical?
Yeah, they're in the middle of the roof.
And is there access to the roof for the elevator or stairwell or?
I would be through the hatch in the stairwell or ladder.
Okay.
Hold on, Joe. There you go.
Oh, yeah. What's the hatch? That was like a little, like a, a steel ladder in the hallway?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Locked on, I'm assuming.
So is that?
I said locked, I'm assuming.
Yeah, yeah.
It wants insurance. And those, are those circles vents? I don't know if they're labeled. Oh, plumbing that.
Yeah, just, well, where we think there's going to be a fence.
Yep. So nothing on the side, no dryer exhausts or?
We are showing some, some dryer exhaust and
Okay.
Kitchen vents, kitchen hood vents. Um, you know, we'll, we'll try to consolidate those as much as possible. We wanted to show something.
All right, but they are shown, right? I think we saw.
Yeah, they are, yeah. There's a few building lights above the balconies.
Okay, anything else, board members? Good update. We hadn't met since April, so the, and had to jog our memories, too. What we saw before. But looks like a plan that could work. And on the site, Brian, the updated site, if you want to switch to that, again, just covering, again, this, this applied for a site ban approval, special permit. But just in terms of you know, zoning table and any sort of forms of relief that we would need to grant as part of this, right? Yeah, it's pretty close, actually. You know, the minimum on a project is four thousand square feet. This has forty-three hundred. Lot frontage is close on a small project. Most of them don't meet it. This is one, it's only six feet short. A lot width is fifty-five. So that needs relief. Open area, minimum is ten in the business district, thirty for garden building. We, this is where we need some relief. We've got ten percent. And then, but the, and then the building height sixty feet is allowed in the business district. I don't think you're going to put a sixty-foot building on this piece of land, but in any event, thirty-five is for a garden building. Three stories, existing is thirteen. We're only going to be thirty-three, so we're going to meet that requirement. The front setback basically is, is, it's, it will really be thirty-three, the setbacks, and what we've got on the front is zero, but it's better because right now it's actually over, over the property line. And I think you want us to be at zero because you want the streetscape. The side setback is going to be three is the closest point, but that's, it's, it's further back in some areas. We have setback is four point three in that elevator area or vestibule, which we talked about. The interesting thing on this project is, which a lot of them don't, this actually meets the floor area ratio at one point four two. Building coverage, business, you're allowed to have eighty percent. We've got seventy-four. Garden department is thirty-five percent, existing is forty-one. So not atypical. Well, thank you for reviewing, because some of that has changed since we last started.
Yep.
Meets the parking requirements of.
Yep.
Stacks, right? Parking, there's no parking. It's primarily overnight parking for the residents and it meets the parking, as I said, a total of six are required. There's no parking needed for the retail because it's under a thousand square feet, and we've got an extra, one extra space. And is one of the units affordable is? Yeah, one of these, one of these, one of these units will be affordable, correct?
Yep, yep, okay.
Yeah, which is another you know, benefit. Okay, thank you for reviewing that. Anything else, board members? Severo, have you decided if you're going to rent this or do condos? Any thoughts on this?
Uh, no thoughts just yet. Depends on, I guess, how we come out the other end of this thing.
Okay.
But either way. It's changed quite a bit.
Going to have the affordable component.
Yeah, either way, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? No, none in our end. Okay. So at this time, I'll open up the public testimony. If anyone has a comment or question, I'll ask you to raise your hand at this time in the Zoom call. And I'll call on you in order that I see them. Not seeing any hands go up, so, Ed Kirby. Hand just went up.
Yep. Can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
See if you can see me here. Can you see me now? Okay.
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. Thanks for your time here. Severo, the new design looks great.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Kirby, can you just state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is Ed Kirby. I'm at Four Wakefield Avenue. Right behind, I'm the developer for the property that's behind this proposed site.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. The new design looks great. Appreciate you skinny in the building down a bit. Wish you great success with the project. However, I do have a little bit of heartburn with the overall size of the building, as well as taking away you know, a lot of the air space and views. Right now, we look out, right now, when they look out out of their windows and balcony, they see of course, the boiler drum as well as Water Street. So I'm just concerned with the overall size of the scope, the project, as well as the encroachment, you know, on, on my property. And the elevator shaft in particular is still only going to be about four feet three from the first floor unit. So that, that being said, with the elevator shaft there, I'm not quite sure what you're doing for sound mitigation with the elevator shaft itself, decibel levels with noise, so on and so forth, as well as the rooftop units that are going to be up there. I don't know what you have for sound deadening or sound attenuation panels up there. But again, you know, looking out the windows and decks, you're going to see this, you know, sizable property that's going to just all of a sudden pop up over the next course of next, over the course of the year. So that being said, I, you know, am concerned there.
Okay, Brian, or anyone, thank you, Mr. Kirby, anyone care to comment on the, on the sound aspects? Have we thought about that?
Yeah, happy to, happy to step in. Hey, Ed, how are you? Long time no talk.
I'm doing well. How are you doing?
Doing well. So in, in reference to sound, that elevator should end up being a traction style, not a hydraulic, so there shouldn't really be much of a concern pertaining to sound in general. There shouldn't really be much of a concern pertaining to sound in general, um, I'll defer to Rob because obviously he's, he's, uh, the one that designed this thing and put everything together, but. Um, sound shouldn't be too much of an issue, um, I don't foresee there being, you know, particularly loud or noisy sounds coming out of there. Um, but the, the elevator shaft itself is not the one that's four feet away, just keep in mind, that's just the mechanical room and the vestibule.
Yeah, I understand. So when that, so that is a mechanical room as well?
Uh, it's just, it's just mechan- mechanical in the sense that that's where, um, all the stuff for the elevator is going to be.
So where are the mechanical components to this? Are they, um, on the roof line or where are they?
Rob, do you want to, do you want to walk Ed through how you set this thing up?
Yeah, so, um, as Severio mentioned, the, um. The room at the, uh, bottom of the elevator shaft, that's four foot three off of your property line. Is the elevator machine room, um, so as you said, it's not a very noisy piece of equipment, also those walls are going to be insulated for, um. Just regular insulation for heat, uh, but they'll also provide sound attenuation. So we're not expecting any sort of disturbing sound out of that room. Um, as for the, uh, mechanical equipment, so, um, if you can just maybe go up to the roof plan, we can show you where that is, but that's all going to be located on the roof. Um, and then the distribution of air and heat is, um, going to be done within each unit, so they'll basically be, um. Mechanical lines that run off of those units, that say unit one, unit two, and three, so those run in the building, run to individual units in each room, so the noise that you're really going to hear from. Um, the equipment is going to be in the space, there's not going to be a lot of noise coming off of those. Um, on the roof and also there are going to be some equipment screening up there, so that'll help a little bit as well, so. We're not expecting there to be any out of the ordinary, uh, what you expect from any typical residential building.
And, and Ed also, just so you know, after our conversation, uh, over the last couple of days, Rob did look into, um, briefly, he didn't get a chance to put a full shadow study together, but. In terms of sunlight on your balconies and all that kind of stuff, he did look into it and it looks like right now, based on the positioning of the properties. Your balconies or, or the folks that are on those balconies are predominantly in the shade right now without the building here. Um, this building and the construction of this building will only affect maybe a sliver of the day, uh, I think, Rob, what did you say, like? First thing in the morning for like half an hour or something like that?
Yeah, but those balconies are on the, um, that are on the backside of our lot are on the north side of, of Ed's building. So they're already in the shade for the most part, maybe in the early morning and early, uh, late evenings, they, they get some sun in the summer. Um, but yeah, it's not, you know, the middle of the day, um, the building that's there now is, is actually shadowing those. Those, uh, those porches, um, so most of the shadows are going to be cast from, from that building are actually going to be on our building. Um, so there shouldn't be any issue with, with any sort of a sun blockage from our, either elevator shaft or the building in general.
Okay, well, um, quick question, back to the rooftop equipment again, I mean, I just see you have just basic movers or sheet metal. In your design package here?
Correct, yep.
Um, I mean, is it? So the question I would have, is there any possibility of putting sound attenuation panels up there? I mean, they're fear, they're fairly inexpensive. Uh, and we just offer, you know, just a, any type of relief up there that I would see would be a benefit. I mean, you put, how many air conditioning units you have up there, six, five?
There would be, uh, yeah, five.
Condensers, condensers, right?
Yeah, 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 it's a heat pump system, um, so yeah, there's four for the units and then one for the, uh, commercial space.
Okay. Okay. If it's at all helpful, Ed, maybe Rob, you can pull some specs on some, um, VFR units and you can send over, uh, any sound specs that we have on them.
Okay, yeah, we can see what we can find, sure.
Okay. Uh, well, the, the retail, the retail space, where are they planning on parking? Probably in front of the, in front of the, uh, building, is that correct?
Yeah, I think so, Ed, um, or they'll walk, you know, this is. Kind of probably going to kind of be a neighborhood type use, you know, people, people are walking by or people at the bowling alley will come over or. You know.
Yeah, the, the idea is to be in line with the rest of the retail uses in the neighborhood, which are neighborhood driven. They're meant to service the neighborhood, I mean, that's predominantly why that type of zoning is in place in that area, right? So.
Right, the, the concern there is that Wakefield Avenue does skinny down there on that end of the street. And, um, parking is definitely an issue there and, uh. Brian, I think I did mention to you in the past, as far as if a fire truck had to come around the corner there. Not from Water Street, but off of Jefferson. Uh, there's always. Pickup trucks and vehicles parked in front of my property. Uh, and I'm just, uh. Little apprehensive seeing that with the retail space, they have people parking along Wakefield Ave.
Well, I think, you know, maybe it, it might be a global effort to go to the town and get some restrictions for everybody on that area. Restrictions on parking.
Right.
Maybe, you know, that might benefit your building too, Ed, possibly. I seem to recall a recent TAC meeting where they were looking at that intersection and parking along. Along that, um.
The thing, I think what Ed's saying.
You're saying that along our building, it kind of be yours, where we're putting that new sidewalk, a lot of people try to squeeze cars in there.
Right, right, and it's just, it's just, it just skinny, the street really skinnies down there and it's just, uh. Pretty cumbersome out there.
Predominantly though, that would be from, um, Wakefield Light and as I recall, the cars that are parked on that side of the road are not, um. It, it's not just pedestrian vehicles, it's, it's mostly municipal, you know, when they're doing work over there, things like that, and they've got their own parking spaces around the corner on Jefferson.
So they don't, so they, so, so Ed, do you see that? They actually park their trucks in front there, they don't pull around to the.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's an issue with the Wakefield, uh, municipal, uh, trucks there, they're parking up on the curb some of the times as well, and I. Understand they're trying to get off the street line, but. Uh, my, my curb, uh, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a Cape Cod berm, I probably should have put granite curbing in there. Uh, which is another conversation, but the curbs all.
No, it's, and it's great that you point that out because as part of the upgrades that we'll be making, that will change, so you won't see that Cape Cod berm style anymore, so that should actually, uh.
Well.
Reduce the propensity for that to happen, so.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, in front, and, and next to your building, but I'm saying in front of my building. To do it over again, I would have put, uh, regular granite curbs in there. To, um, you know, to deter people from coming right up on the curb. Essentially, uh, ruining the Cape Cod berm, but that's. That's something I probably can't change, or maybe I have a conversation during construction and maybe we look at that, but. I can come back to that, I guess.
Right. But you're right, the traffic aspects in that area, where to park, if there should be restrictions of some kind, would be best taken up with the TAC, because again, it's, it's not just this property necessarily, it's. It's just how to handle that whole area and some of the wrong.
Right, and it's.
So.
And the cars, and the cars are going to be going a lot slower in and out of the garage space there, Severio's property. So, uh, that's another question I had as far as what, you know, as far as people walking down the sidewalk. You know, how does that impact that as far as cars coming in and out of that driveway?
Yeah, and just, just also keep in mind from a zoning perspective, um, we're, we're offering seven spaces here, we're required to provide six, so we actually have a surplus.
Right.
But people coming off could be the same as. Anyone's driveway along that street, right? I mean, it's not a high volume.
Right, understood, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, anything else, any other comments, questions?
No, I think, uh, I think I'm all set, um.
Okay.
Wish you luck with the project.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay, thank you, I see another hand up, Nicole. Don't see your last name, Nicole, if you wouldn't mind getting your name and address for the record?
Hi there, my name's Nicole Caragianis, I live at ten Wakefield Ave.
Okay, thank you, go ahead, please.
First off, I just want to comment on how beautiful this design is. Um, it's definitely a huge improvement from the structure that's currently there. Uh, my fiance, who's also on this call, and I just want to. Come on and show our support for this redesign. Um, as you come onto our street, the current structure is a bit of an eyesore as it is, it's hard to walk by. Um. And we, and drive by for that matter, I think the parking concerns don't necessarily pertain to this building in particular. They are a widespread issue that should be taken up with the. Roads and parking committee. I think the retail space would be a great addition to the neighborhood. Both us and our neighbors, our family people, we're looking to grow and establish ourselves within the neighborhood. And we think that this will add a lot of value to the neighborhood and the street. Um. I think. The, the refreshed look really gives the street a new sense of life and would really add a lot of value overall to. Our livelihood. That's all I really wanted to say.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I see another hand, Mark Hennessy.
Hey, everyone, this is Mark Hennessy, um, I also live at ten Wakefield Ave in unit B. Um, I just really wanted to echo what Nicole just said, uh, we really think it would be great for the neighborhood, I'm just excited for this project. And that's really it.
Okay, thank you for your input. Anyone else? Okay, same, no other hands, we'll close with the public testimony for the evening. Okay, so Brian, back to you, it sounds like we've got a few. Uh, punch list items here.
Yeah, I've got landscaping, uh, Chip, uh, Mr. Tabell is, is an O N plan warranted for this project? Who's Mr. Tabell?
Maybe I'm, you're just struggling to come off. I mean, what aspects would it cover? I mean, we're talking.
Well, potentially.
I think it's got to cover snow.
Yeah.
One. Right, because there is, you know, snow is going to be an issue. Um, where there, I did start by saying where there is a residential property right to the rear, uh, you know, I think trash is important. Um, I think lighting underneath the, the balcony would affect the neighbors, so. You know, what's, what's the controls and how are you handling that?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't have to be, you know, volumeness, but. I think there are some aspects that have to be addressed.
Yep, I'll put that together, the other notes I had, Mr. Chair with trash location to mark that out, um. And, um. I'm going to get Joe and answer on the electric meters on the building. Um, Mr. Kirby talked about sound attenuation and, and specs, so we're going to look into that, get some information.
Brian, to that note, I think Mr. Kirby brought up a good point, you're putting screening around these units. Sound attenuation screening isn't that expensive, even if you just put it on the one side. Um, so you might just want to look at a padded screening. For sound attenuation rather than just a, a blank metal piece.
Yeah, Robbie.
I don't think that will make or break the project.
Yeah, that's fine, we can, uh, we can take a look.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought that was a good point.
Yeah.
Will town pick up the trash?
Sorry, okay, Amy.
Oh, same, will, will the town pick up the trash because it's only four units?
Nope.
Okay.
And then the, the fun, fun thing we got to deal with. We need the DPW memo and, and draft conditions, uh, to coincide with that, but to make sure that as many potential conditions would be put on the plan.
And then Brian, the only other thing, we need the engineer letter. From the new civil that. Everything's all set, drainage.
Yeah.
And then the only other, the only other note I had, Brian, was just, if we get to that point, you know, signage would be potentially a condition.
That's right.
As it usually is, if we, you know, and we just reserve the right, okay. That's the only other note, but I think you hit the rest of the points that I had in my notes, uh, Jim, sorry.
Yeah, I would mention one other things, generally we don't, um, like wall packs. And we have two types here. I'm not sure these are appropriate for here, but then again, I'm at odds to say what's appropriate within the design, so I just. Ask that they go look back at those. As to the, as to the appropriate use. Whether they are appropriate for this building or not. One of them is over the garage entry area on the sidewalk side, and I'm not sure where the other one is, whether it's over by the elevator or something like that. It might be better in, like the lights that are in the garage, that may be some sort of downlights. Um, that are, uh, LEDs or something like that, that. Might, uh, add to, to other projects basically where there's a timer where these things are on and off at certain times basically, or at least dimmed. So. Uh, even though this is a smaller project, but it's an open garage at the same time. That'll be looked at.
Maybe motion censored or something, you know.
Okay, sure, we can, we can take a closer look at that.
I assume these are, I assume these are LED, I mean, when I, right?
Yeah, they are, yeah, so, I mean, basically, like Jen said, we have some in the garage and then, um. Above the doors and the balcony, just to light those up. We, we actually pulled quite a few of them off of the main building, we had more in the last edition. Um, so we have reduced it, but we can, you know, take a closer look.
And if they're dark skies compliant, probably.
I believe those are.
Yeah.
We'll get that, correct?
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I think we got lighting specs.
Okay. Um, unless there's anything else, two weeks enough to come back with a lot of this?
I think so.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair would be appropriate to get draft conditions and. Whatnot for the next meeting as well.
That'd be fine if Brian thinks he can do it.
Yep.
Okay.
We'll have everything.
Sounds good. Okay. So with that, um, look to continue for two weeks to the twenty-sixth.
I move that we continue this here until January twenty-sixth.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion on the motion? Regular voting membership?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
And I vote yes, such unanimous, all right, thanks for the update, glad to have you back on the agenda. And we'll, we'll see you in two weeks.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, have a good night.
You too.
All right. So that's it for the continued hearings, we now have another matter. It was added to the agenda, uh, six, ten Salem Street request for modification and extension.
Right, and that's you, yeah.
It is, yes, um. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, for the record, Brian McRae here for, uh, Flori Real Estate Investors. Um, who, um, Fabian is on, Fabian Flori, I think the board is familiar with Fabian, the Flori family owns. A number of rental units, uh, in Wakefield. Um, they own, um, a good number on Salem Street, uh, they own. Uh, the project behind six, ten Salem Street, the, to refresh the board's memory, the six, ten Salem Street project is the Taylor Rental Building that was, uh, with Paul Cagiano, that's the one on Salem. Um, and the Floris, uh, own the pro, the rental building out back, and then they own the other two rental buildings on the same side of, of Salem Street. Um, subsequent to, uh, Mr. Cagiano getting the, getting the project permitted, uh, the Floris approached him. Uh, in interest in buying the project, which they have done. Um, the Flori family in the form of, uh, Flori Real Estate Investors acquired the property, uh, in the permits on October twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. Um, so, you know, they're excited about it, really fits well into their, uh, real estate portfolio, they maintain their properties meticulously. Um, and they, they have good tenants. So I think that this could be a real, a good situation, because now you have one, uh, company in essence taking care of that whole side of the street that has to answer that, uh. Uh, everybody in is, is, uh, not pointing a fingers on who should be doing what. So the, the purpose of being here is really, um. Threefold, one, to introduce you to the fact that that occurred. And I think, uh, some of the board members are familiar with Fabian because they, the, uh, Flori family has been before the board for a number of times in the, in the past. Um. And, um, the other thing that we're requesting is. Uh, this project was kind of unique because when, when Paul Cagiano permitted it, he said that he wanted to do condominiums. So, um. I'm going to share. The decision of the board. Um, can the board, who, I lost it.
We see a decision.
Oh, you do? I don't.
You did. It's gone.
Oh, hold on, I'm in the wrong, I'm in the wrong program, yeah. Good. Good, what a mess. Apologies. What I did.
What you.
I'm I'm logged on to my computer at work and I loaded it through there. So sorry about that. Here, wait just a second. Please work. Okay, do you see that?
Oh. Yes.
Great. So this was the decision of the board that was filed. Um, it was voted on in February last year and filed in March. Um, and it it's basically nothing's changing in the project. Fabian. Uh, and I have had a one talk. He understands that they have to build it exactly according to plan. They're very good at that. They. They actually purchased the forty B out back. They did not permit that. They built it meticulously, exactly to plan. Uh, Fabian is an excellent builder. He's gone. He's in the process of going through all of the plans and all of the conditions of the board. And understands uh the necessity to comply with everything. So we're not looking to change anything on the project. Um, uh, as far as style, but this board, uh, this um decision, it's thirty unit mid-rise apartment building. And it's really. Interesting because Paul had talked about doing condominiums. So in this decision, there's one part. That. Um. Here we go. In the decision, grant a special permit to approve the final site plan for development. Of a thirty, a special permit and to approve the site point of thirty unit multifamily mid-rise apartment building, and it references the unit count, which had to be condominium units. So obviously, the the Florries are not a condominium business. They want to do apartments. The the affordable account stays the same. Um, nothing changes. They just want uh what they would request is a minor modification to. To state that, you know, it it doesn't have to be condominiums. It can be a rental building. So that's the second reason for being here. And the third reason is um. Because of what's go they just acquired in in October and what's going on with COVID. So Fabian was hoping to get on the construction, but with materials. Uh, and um, and shortage of work staff, he's trying to get his his. His um building permit plans put together, which is is an adventure. Uh, and with what's going on uh in the timeline coming up because uh special permits need to be exercised within a year. Uh, or they could lapse. Um, we're asking the board to find good cause. Uh, to extend the time period of the three special permits that were issued on this project. So. Special permits are really interesting. Your variances. You can just for you can for any reason, you can just extend the variance. Special permits, the board has to find good cause. Um, to extend. It's not like just, hey, yeah, we feel like extending. And I think with, you know, what's going on in the world today, the fact that the Florries just. Acquired the property. He's in good faith. I don't think, you don't want to delay this project, Fabian, right? You want to build it as quick as possible.
Yes, as soon as possible.
Yeah, and um, so maybe you can tell the board what, you know, what the hurdles that you're facing trying to get, you know, plans and stuff put together, Fabian, if you could.
I've spoken to uh each of the guys, Peter and. Uh, Jason, the engineer, almost on a daily basis, and. They have the same trouble that most of us have in the business. Jason doesn't have a drafting guy and Peter doesn't have this guy. I mean, this, we're all going through it right now, but uh they're closed. They're about seventy-five percent complete. So we're right there. You know? I think with a few extra months, we will be there. So it's not like they haven't worked on it, but they're. They're just back behind like everybody else.
So what would be the deadline, Brian, with according to the letter of the law here? Is it when it was clocked in with the town clerk? So twenty-two March?
Yeah.
When it was filed at the registry, which might.
Well, it's definitely not the registry, you know, I. I I believe it's when it's filed with the town clerk. Yeah, that's that, I think. You know, someone, some people might argue it's a date that the board folks, but. You know, I I have found some case law that it's it's the clerk. So I always take just a conservative approach and and say, hey, it's coming up in February because, you know, I don't want to go by a date. So, you know, what you've done in the past is you've extended it uh for six months. From the date it would lapse without specifying to leave it, you know, or just set a date. That's probably the easiest thing. Just pick a date. Um, you know, that you, you know, that you would, you would find if you weren't inclined to do so, that you would find good cause and you would extend. Uh, the time to exercise it to whatever date that you pick or you think is reasonable.
Well, the the question I have, Brian, if you think you're at seventy-five percent. You've got almost three more months to get to March twenty-second. Do you need three months, one month, six months?
Yeah, I would say, I would say just to be safe, so we don't have to come back a minimum of six, you know, with with what's going on with COVID now. Um, just to be safe. You know, Wakefield's, Wakefield's, you know, pretty unique. So under under the state law. Um, uh, bylaws can allow variances to be not lapsed for up to three years. And most towns and cities I work in have a two-year period. It's always two years, and Wakefield is one year on this special permit. It can be one year, and that's what our bylaw is. But one year is not a lot of time to, you know, to get something going sometimes. So. Um, I will request Mr. Tabell um that you extended uh, you extended uh six months. Um, from the March date. So basically, you know, to September.
September first.
Yeah, I gi- given our track record with this developer, guys, I don't have a problem with that. He's. You know, done everything in the past that he said he was gonna do, so.
And if Fabian, you're probably gonna start this a lot sooner than that, right?
I mean, conversation right now with Benny downtown, um. Seafill issued me some sort of a foundation permit, which we're ready to do, but. He uh, we're working on that.
Well, let maybe we can have a discussion with it with the board on that. So so you, they have to review building permit plans. Um. How's the board feel about a foundation permit? Um, Jim, do you think that we could do that? Or do you think that would be in violation of our of our? Decision?
No, I I I mean, I can review. The foundation permit and and Benny has in the past basically allowed foundations to go in. Um, the the owner then is at risk just in case something happens in the.
Yeah.
Um, that that case, basically. So he's taken it upon himself to start without having the rest of the permit if if Benny allows it. But if Benny has, and in my experience, has been, a lot of towns. Uh, will release a foundation permit. Um, so my my effort at the time would be just to look at the dimensions of the architecture. That was submitted to us versus the dimensions that are on a foundation plan to conform that, to make sure they conform with the outer perimeter.
So Fabian, if you're if you're gonna, um, if you're gonna pursue that, let me know and I'll I'll connect with Mr. McBain to make sure he views the application.
All right. Well, yeah, foundation permit, it's. It's probably two months of groundwork, so that's why I miss, I want to get the foundation permit. We may not actually stop pouring concrete for at least. Two months after the first rig shows up to do the pilings, to strengthen the soil. So.
You don't want to.
It's more groundwork. I think the other part of the fountain, the permit will catch up, the actual plans. That will all catch up to the actual foundation work.
Well, you're still, you're still gonna, in order to get a foundation permit, basically, you're still gonna file a set of foundation drawings. And as I understand. You will end up with piles here because it's pretty mucky.
Oh, no, there's a lot of piles going in.
Yeah. And I'm not worried about the piles. I'm just worried about the looking at the perimeter. That's it. Period.
Did you guys, did you guys file a demo permit? Doesn't that count? The the building?
Oh, yeah, demo permits been filed and.
Isn't that, isn't that, isn't that like the start of the project right there?
I case laws all over the place. There's cases that say you gotta have a footing. Uh, you know, it's like, you know, but there there are, there are clear cases that say site work doesn't do it.
Yeah, the language says construction in the bylaw, not demolition of previous.
Yeah.
Once construction has begun, yeah.
And I think the reason they do that, Craig, is otherwise people would just stop pushing dirt around and kind of.
Well, that's what they do with the variance.
Yeah.
If you exercise your variance, oh, we dug a hole.
Yeah.
Yeah, we we got that at four corners.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's what I was thinking. I wasn't gonna call anything out, but.
Yep. Okay, so so let's bring this in. Is there any other concerns with extending? We don't have to beat this one. Um, okay.
I do have one question on, I do have one question on the other front. Um, there was Brian and guys, remember? I kept asking about the um curbing going into the forty B. Because there was still a.
Street.
Hey?
Yeah.
That was gonna remain. Because, Brian, I think you stated, you know, to get everybody to agree, different owners and. All that stuff, we couldn't fix it easily.
Hmm.
So can we now fix that curbing and make it right and close off that entrance? I mean, it it only makes sense now. The Fabian would probably do it. Not even realizing it was an issue.
Yeah.
But can can we just do that now? Can we just take care of it? You remember that whole discussion?
I I do remember. Fabian, you know what Mr. Tabell's talking about? This is is it on the driveway going into your project out back on the left-hand side, there's some open curbing.
Okay.
An entrance into the old Taylor rental spot. And we tried to get it closed off and new curbing put into that. But because you own the forty B and it it would have gotten complicated. But now that you own everything.
Yeah.
It would only make sense to do the curbing right.
Uh, you actually bring up a good, a good point. I actually made a phone call about three months ago to uh. Can you remember his name? It's been so long, but I haven't, I have a guy lined up to do it. To close that off, but he said the curbing is eight to ten weeks out, so I. I figure we'll do it at the same time we do the building, but we were gonna close that right off.
Well, I get to plan up, Chip. Where is it?
Trying to remember exactly.
It's in the back. It's in the, it's in the back. Go up the driveway. It's right there.
It's right there. Right. I think your cursor's right on it.
Yeah, yeah, it's right in this area.
Yeah.
Let me see if there's an existing, yeah.
It's the existing curb cut into the old. Right, see how the curb, it's that twenty feet.
Is this the existing? Hold on, let me see if this is the uh.
Yeah.
This is the. Existing conditions plans right here.
Right, I actually think since it's on his forty B.
Right there, Chip. Is that what you're talking about right here?
Yeah, you want to connect the outside corners. So I actually think since the curbing's on his forty B property.
Yep.
That he can do this. By right on his own property.
Oh, he can do it. There's no question. I mean, David, you see what the Mr. Tabell's talking about? This area.
I've had the guy look at it already, uh, probably a few months ago. He looked at it.
So you want to close this up anyways?
We're gonna close it up, yeah.
Yeah. Good.
Excellent. All right. Okay, so. Back to the other thing, because we didn't really close it. What date would you propose, Brian? Six months from March?
September one's fine at the board.
I was gonna say just September one.
Yeah, I I like a finite date because then then you have a date, you know, it's not like that, trying to calculate.
Should be plenty.
Board members fine with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll modify, we'll we'll do a modification. Well, we got to vote on it, but assuming. The board votes that it's a minor modification, we'd modify that previous decision, Brian.
Um, that's what I'd like to do, to reference that it can be a rental building.
Right.
Um, again, Brian, do you want to keep it condominiums and or?
I don't think, uh, Fabian, do you want to, you're not gonna do condominiums, right, Fabian?
No, we don't really do condos.
You're never gonna sell it, okay?
Yeah, and once and once this project.
Believe me, I like.
You know, in in the regulatory agreements recorded for whatever it's gonna be to unwind that is is not gonna happen. Because, you know, the these projects through the D H E D are making a commitment to the town of Wakefield that these units are affordable in perpetuity. So. It would have to be a modification to come back anyways, you know? So, yeah, we would just change it to rental, Chip.
Okay.
If we could.
Okay, so we need to vote on that and to extend. Um, what what's the? I think it was extended variance before the time to exercise the special permit. To to to, um, again, without referencing what we think it originally was, because again, it could be argued it's the clocking date versus the decision date. But to extend the the date by which the applicant can exercise the special permit, is that the proper terminology?
Three special permits.
Three special permits.
Right, right. The exercise of special permits to be not September first, twenty twenty-two. But is exercising the permit the correct terminology?
Or it just shall not lapse. We find good cause that it shall not lapse until.
Yes, yes.
That's that's the language from the bylaw. It shall lapse on. Whatever date.
Yeah, the the permit will not lapse until until September, if not, if not exercised, will not lapse. Um, until September one, um, two thousand twenty-two. Let me just see. Give me one second. It wouldn't, so by law, should provide a special permit granted under this section shall lapse within the specified time period, not more than two years. Now it's three years. If a substantial use thereof is not sooner commenced, except for good cause. Or in the case of permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date. Except for good cause. So, you know, I will request that the board find that there's good cause. Uh, that this will not lapse so long as construction is begun by September one. Um, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
And the good clause is COVID and the fact that, uh, you know, the Florries just acquired the property in there in the process of retaining, um. Professionals to the designs that need to be done before construction can begin.
Understood. Board members, any concerns with being able to justify just cause or good cause in this case?
No. No.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I think that's it, Fabian, right?
That's it, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so there's two motions to be made here, board members, if uh someone's comfortable making them.
I move that we find the change in the original. Uh. But in the original uh finding of the granting of the special permits. Uh, where it states that these were to be condominium units, that they shall be changed to apartment units. And that um this is a minor modification.
And Mr. Tabell, you also referenced apartment slash rental units, please.
Apartment slash rental units. I tried to slash it before and you don't like it. Apartment slash rental units.
Well, you said condo slash rental, but okay.
I know, I know.
The key is rental, yeah.
Rental, that's right.
Okay. Uh, that's the motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Thank you, Amy. Any discussion on the motion to find that there's a minor modification? All right, regular voting membership?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's approved.
All right, let's see if I can remember how to do this next one, right? I move that we uh. Grant a can a uh extension to the special permits. So that the special permit permit will not lapse. If construction does not begin prior to September first, twenty twenty-two. And we find that because of COVID and the change of ownership, uh, that this is uh just cause.
Hmm. Second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion?
Construction does begin before.
Didn't I say does?
You said does not begin. So we need the opposite.
Player, and I'm just a slob, right?
Yeah.
I wasn't gonna say slob.
Well, that was, I did a double negative.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Second to that amendment.
Okay. Any discussion on the amended motion? To extend to September first. Uh, okay, same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, so that's proved. We'll get it written up accordingly. Brian, we'll work offline and get um both of these documented and filed. And um. And good luck on the project. Looking forward to seeing it developed.
Me too. All right, thank you, everyone.
All right, have a good night. Okay, board members, on to clerk and. Okay, board members, on to clerk and board comments. Anything for tonight?
Nope.
Well, I I don't. You put out that list, Dave. Of uh projects. And stipulations and the like. Where do you want to go with this? Because some of this, I think, ends up in the town's lap. And or in the developer's lap. To find out where they're at and whether that money. You know, is gonna be spent or is somebody sitting on it?
Right, so my intent was to. Um, because this has come up a couple different times and we're like, oh, yeah, I don't. Remember this and remember that. Um, so um, and I didn't know of any definitive list we had keeping track because they were starting to. Sort of accumulate, and I think we got like five or six of these now. So I put the list together. My my thought was that if we could agree that, yeah, we think we've got that list. Was to review it perhaps with. Uh, the town administrator, maybe the town engineer, Bill. Um, who may already be in contact with some of these. I think they're aware of them, if not all of them already, perhaps there've been discussions between them and the applicants um and developers. Um, but just to review them with them. Um, and we could bring in, you know, the attorneys or representatives on the applicants themselves. Um, if there was a question, but. Yeah, we got to review them with the town because really it's it's part of our decisions, but ultimately it was it was work to be done outside. You know, the project itself, right? It was utility work, sidewalk work, you know.
See, I don't know.
Coordinated. It has to be coordinated with DPW and engineering and whatever, right?
I think I think in most of these cases, the money has gone to the town for the town to do it when appropriate. I don't.
I don't remember.
Like five Bennett, you're gonna get them to do the. Work in the middle of Main Street.
No, I would agree with you there, but let's make sure it happens. On the other hand. Six hundred and five ninety or whatever it is, basically. Is I don't, when you look at. Um, the decision. There's no mention of anything in there at all. About the sidewalk, and yet between the two projects, we spent a hell of a lot of time discussing it. In fact, it was supposed to go in with the original project six hundred. And then it got laid off to the next project. And combined. But when you look at even the meeting minutes, they're a little short. On this discussion, at the same time, they're on the plans. So, you know, I'm not sure.
What I remember there. Is that this started with Rick Stinson. And they didn't want to do the sidewalks till they redid North Ave. And that there was a plan of redoing North Ave. So that I don't remember if money went aside for this, which I'm thinking it did. Um. But I do agree that six hundred was supposed to be done along with five ninety eight, and then Bill might remember that. It got all put aside until North Ave gets redone. And maybe they have money to do it towards that. I don't remember any of that, other than the discussions.
It doesn't. There is. There's nothing mentioned about money. In anything I read from the meeting minutes. Nor in the decision. And I I don't want this to skate like like some of the other stuff is is either out there skating. To disappear like Greenwood. Or or, you know, we just start asking questions every six months as to where this is at. As as Dave said, let's find out who's an authority. Or we get back to the attorney and say, what's the status of this? Because I'd like to be on record. For the board. To say, you know, certain amount of money was given by the development to the town. Or is the development waiting on the town to do something in the street? Which will never happen. By the developer. I don't know.
Right, in some cases, there were, I think, decisions. Mention specific amounts of money and conditions. Um, and and in the case of North, I don't think it did at all, so. There is an open question. Well, if there was, was it handled sort of outside the decision and it happened and it's waiting at the town? Or not? So that's where the some of the like Bennett. We think we know, but again, did money actually get put in escrow or given to the town? Twenty seven and thirty seven water was next on the list. That's supposed to be curbing in concert with the town.
Curbing and changing in entrance area and we know that will never get done. If we don't push it.
Right, but again, it's coordinated with DBD. That's why we got to bring him into the conversation. Is it on their list? Are they thinking about timing? Do they have the money they need? From the applicant, you know, and if not, if it's something that's not an escrow. Then we got to follow up and get it where it needs to be, so the money is there. Same with North. Harvard Mills. Which is still being built, but that decision, right? I I found that one out. And I know they've been working with them on some of the utility upgrades and so forth, but it did also reference. Uh, a sum of money. So, I mean, has that been addressed um where they're coming to the conclusion of that project? Um, Foundry. Something about, you know, removing telephone poles and. And putting in do not block on the intersections again. So I I called out the conditions where I found them. Um.
Also on Foundry, I think there was some money supposed to go towards the last project anyway. Um, to go to streetlights or something like that.
Uh, let's see, what does the condition say? It had a do not block and no parking signs. I don't remember. The conditions didn't say it. And it didn't talk about. Lights that I could see. Uh. Let's see, no parking signs. Wait a second. Roadway improvements. If as shown on the site plan. So again, we we refer to the site plan. So we'd have to see what that what that specifically entails. Um, and the new one on sixty two, six seventy six Foundry. It. Yeah, twenty five thousand dollar contribution for future traffic improvements to the area.
Okay, yeah.
So that's one somewhat open ended. Only if it's adapted by the town. So again. Um, recently filed, so I don't know that that's happened yet, but. Those are the ones I came up with. Um, the foundries.
What about Hallmark Health, Dave and and Jim? Partner. There an issue down there? On street lights as well?
Where? Sorry.
Money put aside to do some.
They did those um, the the crosswalk things.
I know they did the crosswalk, but I think there was also. Money to upgrade the lights at the four at four corners there. At the gas station and. Jim, do you remember anything?
Alls I remember that was supposed to repaint the units on the roof. Instead of a instead of a screen up there.
Yeah, they still haven't done that.
They haven't done that.
Which which project you talking?
Hallmark Health.
Hallmark Health in Greenwood.
Oh, Hallmark.
Down by the tracks. Now they're crossing the tracks.
Um, okay, I'll have to look up that decision and see if there were. If it was a condition or again, we put a lot on the plan, so we don't have as many conditions. So if they didn't do something on the plans, we'd have to call that out. Right, if something was hasn't been done. This was sort of the off off site work that I was. Kind of thinking.
I think there was. I think there was some money for some. Light upgrades or something.
And didn't they move? Didn't they move a crosswalk and put in that flashing crosswalky thing?
They did that. That was on the plans.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking farther down where the gas station and the old Brigham's used to be in that. Intersection. That was put aside for light light adjustments if needed.
I don't I don't remember that.
Well, I could be wrong. It's been the first time, but I'm okay with that.
I'll look it up. Again, I went with the ones that were sort of top of mind and I remembered and they came up. So if anyone's aware of aware of anyone else, you know, let me know. Send me back an email. That was the intent. Let's just get our what we think is the list together, pointing to specific conditions, or if we know something's called out on a plan. We can reference a certain site plan, page number, whatever. Um, then I can summarize it in a document and and um have a follow up conversation with the town. A couple of town reps and see where we go from there. If we need to bring in the applicant. Because something that was supposed to happen didn't happen. Um, or if things have happened and the town's just has the money and it's just being coordinated and it, you know. In in due course, based on, yeah, North Ave upgrades or Water Street upgrades. And they're gonna coordinate with the applicants on these sites when they get there, but.
You have um, the the forty B in Greenwood on them? I know they haven't started, but.
They had they had a condition on them to do something about the crosswalk and lighting down by the school.
Right.
So when does that lapse?
Three years. Forty B.
Um, this October.
It's gonna be soon, though.
No, it's. We approved it October. We did Tarrant and in Greenwood within a month of each other, like October or November of two thousand nineteen, so it would be this October or November. Whereas they've already started on Tarrant, so they're. Okay. Greenwood would be this year if they haven't done anything or come in to request an extension.
Be okay? They haven't.
Did they? Did they pull permits? It's based on pulling the permit.
Tarrant hasn't pulled permits yet.
No, no, I haven't seen drawings for either project.
Even though they're they're moving dirt around up there. Okay.
And and that's the the forty B is strictly based on pulling the permit.
Okay, so they have.
But I won't see anything if they're moving dirt or demoing buildings. Basically, I'm not gonna see it till they ask for a permit.
Yeah.
No plans yet.
Oh, okay. And I'll look at I'll look at both decisions just to see if conditions were in there when they come, right? Assuming they they will, um. There'd be potentially things in there, but they're not even. They're not even there. Any anything else that board members can think of?
So how do we do this one? Tarrant was like. Oh, yeah, we'll reach out to the state and talk about the timing of the lights on. Route twenty eight when we get started. How do we even know that's gonna happen?
Ah, interesting.
Remember that whole conversation?
Yeah, it was a big part of the conversation.
What they do, where we can talk to them if it becomes a problem and. How how do we even know, you know? I don't even know who's building Tarrant anymore, you know, has has it changed ownership? Has he brought a partner in? What's he doing up there?
I haven't heard anything.
You know, I don't think we'll know till till we.
I mean, wouldn't, I mean, that would. I don't think there's much. That one's different because this is a forty P and that's an offsite improvement. So even though they said they would do it, they. Even if we put it in the conditions, they don't have to do anything. It's offsite. It's a forty B, so.
Right.
I I understand the question, but it doesn't matter.
So then why do we talk about it?
Well, we talked about it to get them to do it because he was pretty. Accepting of pretty much anything we asked him to do.
But but if it's just a moot point, then why waste our time doing it?
Well, I could put on.
Maybe he'll feel bad if he doesn't do it.
If there's something real there and it wasn't our conditions, I'll put it on the list, but again, these two maybe are a little further out because they haven't applied for permits, whereas the others are. Either under construction or recently completed and. We think there's something still to be done.
Well, I think I think once the once the permit is requested. One of the things we can when asked basically, because we can hold up the permit, quite frankly, by my nodding approving it. Um, is that ask them what the status of that is.
Yep.
The other thing I would ask Dave is that somehow we maybe get with Bill Renault. Or Steve. And say, what should be the process going forward? So that we put the same wording. Do we prefer to have? The town get money and then they do with it what they deem necessary based on the permit? Would they? Prefer to have the contractor do the work? What? What would? Is there a policy per se? That they'd like to come up with? Moving forward, because we tend to have done a lot of these lately.
And and I. I have had a couple of conversations with Bill and yes, I do feel he's. He has a recommendation in that area, but we'll get that clarified, like. Improvements to the town, uh, contributing money for this, you know, again, it depends on the specific details of the project and its location. But yes, I do believe they have. Um, some recommendations to offer that we could consider in future decisions.
I think it will be important as C C N F comes forward if we ever get to that spot.
Yep, and.
Seven hundred unit project.
Now, now, and. Yep, and and perhaps others, you know, maybe a forty B on North Ave at some point, then. Whatever else might come down the pike. Um, but, uh, yeah. I'll add it to the list.
Uh, Dave, is the bank on that list? Does did anyone else owe owe us anything? The bank, I know they started that. They're already framing right now. So I'm done there.
Uh.
The only thing they owe us is some discussion with somebody about. Two trees out in front of the property. On the sidewalk. It may be on the plan, Dave.
What about that piece of property that was right next? Does does he hold that? He owns that whole piece, right? You split it in half?
Yeah, and that's gotta be seeded or done something with once it's not being used as a lay down area.
Yeah.
I mean, would we consider? I don't know that we have much control over, but like Bennett owns that adjacent lot and it's just got some rubble on it.
I think, um, are you talking about in front?
And back and back, if you want Bennett Street. And go by the building.
Wasn't that gonna be a two family house? I thought he was gonna build a house there at some.
I mean, in the in the back corner was gonna do a house.
There's a pile of rubble for three years.
I forgot about that.
I mean, I it wasn't. It was a separate, I think technically it's a separate property, right? So. He can do what he wants with it, but I don't know that we can tie it in. It's just maybe a question like, what are you thinking?
Well, we did ask him at the time to clean it up.
Yeah.
But again, I think the only hammer we have. Is with the building inspector when he's giving final occupancy permit to these projects to. Make sure everything's in order before he gives it. Otherwise, people are like, oh, yeah, I forgot to do that.
Yep. But in the case, some of these, like, real money was supposed to go to the town for. Whatever, traffic. Utilities, something, right? Roadway improvements, so. It. At the very least, putting that list together and having that conversation, making sure that that has happened, and if it hasn't, ensure that it does. Um.
Yeah.
Some of these others maybe to a lesser degree, but. Um, yeah, okay. And some language for future decisions, um. You know, recommendations from from. Town engineer, whoever. Um, okay. I'll follow up when I get the list sort of updated. I'll send it around again for another. Kind of final look and. See if everyone's comfortable with it, okay?
Yep.
Um, great, thank you. Good discussion. Um. Unless there's anything else? We have some minutes. Uh, no, we get to approve some minutes.
Oh, that's true.
So I will add that I um, um, I read them again, um. Right before this meeting or a little while before the meeting, found two things just in the minutes. Um. I think Amy was still trying to connect at the last hearing, so the minutes, as usual, say Amy read the legal notice, but I actually read it. Um, because I think she was still trying to get connected. Sorry. Um. And um, it maybe under the wishful thinking note, it said we adjourned at twelve twenty six P M.
It was.
Maybe the next day. But no, it wasn't a seventeen hour meeting. It was just a seven hour meeting, so.
I'll fix that.
Yeah, so so I would entertain a motion that we um. Um, accept the minutes as amended uh with those two changes that Gail will make, but otherwise substantially. Well done as usual.
So why don't I just say so moved?
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Oh.
All right, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Greg? Tom?